All right, so we are calling to order this meeting of the Northwood Beach Pool Park and Recreation District, Thursday, March 28th at 6:33 PM. Present are Commissioners Holly, Harden, Singleton as acting chair, and Hoffmeyer. Commissioner Merrill is absent, so who, do we know whose turn it is to take the minutes?
It will be yours.
Okay, all right, Singleton's doing the minutes.
I can do it on the data report.
Um, I'll take them, it's fine, I just might need to break for, so I appreciate that, thank you. All right, so do we have any board issues? Commissioner Holly?
Uh, yeah, I don't have any. Is that what's first? I do not have any, sorry.
Right, it's second after meeting called to order by the chair, I'm just, sorry. Commissioner Harden?
No.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer? All right, and I also have no board issues. Agenda changes. Commissioner Holly?
Um, I would like to put on the agenda, I don't know if it's under business or new business, increasing prices for the opening in, when we reopen the pool.
All right, so fee structure is really, all right, fee structure.
That's a really good way to put it.
So I think that would be considered new business at this point, since it's not something that's been an ongoing discussion, is all right?
Perfect.
Okay.
And I know it's, no decisions are going to be made, but we need to get started or we're just going to be flailing.
That's fair, oh, do we have any, or is there any public comment? Do you guys want to say anything? Okay, awesome.
So not necessarily an agenda change, just, just informatic, I guess, if you will. Rex had forwarded an email from the baseball association, and they will be given a little presentation, or at least speaking to what they'd sent out during the committee report, during the corporate bond committee report.
Okay.
I want to say a presentation.
Summary, there you go.
Well, but remember, this is all only being recorded, so we can call it a presentation, and then like, ah, totally, see? Um, all right, thank you, all right, and so now, so there was no public comment, approval of minutes. This is going to be messy.
Ma'am Chair, I would like to move that the minutes, I'll make my motion, and then I'll explain just really quick. I would like to move that the minutes for August 24th, 2017, November 21st, 2017, January...
Hold on, no, keep going, it's fine, it's fine.
January 11th, 2018, January 25th, 2018, April 26th, 2018, May 17th, 2018, August 23rd, 2018, and September 12th, 2018, be approved as written.
To, okay, to, to where, sorry, which one, August 23rd, September 12th?
It's all the ones that either have a star or a line next to it, because they're either the ones I wrote, or that I have had time to look at. And so I would say, if we take them each individually with any changes people want...
You're, you're in the middle of making a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm just, so just, right.
That was my motion.
All right, so hold on, please, I'm just making a... All right, so, so discussion. Would you like to start, since you...
What I would like to do is take them each individually, if, and if anyone has changes, and we make the change, right, you know, and then, and then we can get a, you know, so, any, any changes that need to be made to August 24th?
I am trying to figure out...
They're in order, I think.
I think that I would not be able to vote on this first, too.
Whatever, you can, you can vote, you just don't have to vote.
No, I, no, I just wasn't...
Right, she's going to abstain because she wasn't on the board that time.
Yeah, and that's fine, that's fine.
That is absolutely acceptable.
We have enough people for four of us, so...
Take a vote as long as you want, please.
Okay, any, any changes to August 24th?
I don't see any.
Okay, any changes to...
Can you, can, sorry, how about all, okay, I'm still, I'm, I'm trying to reconcile with the ones I've already read, and I know they're in different order, it's, it's all great to have more information rather than less, I'm just trying to make sure.
Perfect.
Okay, so we're good with, with August 24th?
Okay.
All right.
November 21st, 2017. I did those two.
Okay, so actually, I would go back to the last one, and just say, somewhere your name should be on this?
I always signed mine.
Okay.
I think they...
Where, where is that?
They must have chopped it up.
I, I figured that you did, but that's...
It's, it's part of my format, did you chop my name off here or something?
I opened your files and printed them.
So, so these need a, a prepared by, submitted by?
I'm looking at this 24 August, and look, there's no, um, these are not complete, you did not, I sent you, I sent you complete, complete minutes, and this doesn't even have the full section.
Can somebody, can you grab a little backup for a second?
Since it doesn't have, it's, it's, these are not complete. I sent you the complete documents, and you didn't...
I think so.
Rather, can we, can we focus on the issue which is, here's, here's what I think we should do in this case, is, if we don't believe that they are, that they are accurate as shown to us here, then we, then we take them off the list for right now. I mean, I, I think, I think we could, we could micromanage these to the greatest extent possible, I don't know, so...
What happened is the copy machine did not read them correctly.
Okay.
I did not really appreciate the situation, and I did not copy them as I said I did.
All I said was, they're not complete.
But I opened the files, I printed them exact, I printed them single sided, the copy machine sometimes when you're putting them through a single page, it doesn't read them correctly, we did have them come and fix it, this is the first time I ever had a problem since then, but I have the single sided here, and they're all complete in my stack, but in this one, I can see that there are pages missing.
Oh, that's a lot of them missing.
Yeah, but I can see what's missing, again, here, that one's missing in there, so I think that's what happened. So if you guys want to take this, or it's single sided, and be able to pass them around, you could do that.
Well, we'll just leave it for next month, so, um, okay, so probably, I did notice one, another one that was missing multiple pages, so it's like, so mine are multiple page things, they're probably all cut off.
Well, let's, let's do ourselves the favor of, let's go through each one that we have, and either it looks correct, or it doesn't, and if it doesn't, then, then let's, let's move it to the side before, there's really, it's, it either looks right to us, and we feel confident to approve it, or it doesn't, and I just move on from there.
That's fine. The 24th of August and the 21st of November are definitely not complete.
January 11th, 2018 is the next one?
That's not mine.
Right, right.
Oh, and now Commissioner Singleton's name is misspelled four times in there.
Right, so my name is misspelled, and then the apostrophe with the date can come out, would be the other, just update. Um, and I don't know, like, this, I'll be honest, because, well, we're behind on minutes, and so I'm just going to throw myself under the bus, and, and ask the question, do, do we make the changes, if there needs to be changes, what's, what's the right process? Do, or should we make them and resubmit them?
That's what I think.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be sure we were all, have the same expectation moving forward, so, in this case, if you could, um, just, it's, like, as much as it's not really a big deal, on the other hand, if we could spell everybody's name correctly, it's just, mine's, it's E.L., I mean, right here, it's E.L., but it's L.E., and then just, there are just apostrophes on the dates, all of them, those can just get removed, and other than that, I'm fine with everything, personally, I don't know if anyone else has any feedback on January 11th, 2018?
That was all...
So it's L.E. instead of E.L.?
It is, yeah, thank you, all right.
But you at least spelled it the same way every time, good for you.
I swear that I looked it up somewhere on the district's website, or a past minutes packet as well, so it might be somewhere else.
January 25th, not complete.
April 26th, 2018, I would think, I like to carry it with the 2018 in there?
Yeah, and I would, like Commissioner Hoffmeyer reviews about the expense vouchers, I would put an approve in there, because there's no, I don't know if it's an adverb or whatever, but it's like, it needs approved expense vouchers, that way it's like...
Moves approval, moves for approval, okay.
Otherwise, that one was fine.
Okay.
And this one also doesn't have a, oh, never mind, never mind, no, yeah, this one doesn't have a prepared by on it.
No, and I don't think by the way, neither, I'll give those.
Okay, okay, super. I don't, why, okay, there we go, why I noticed it on one.
Actually, as, as I was looking at that, I'm like, yeah, that was not perfect.
And 17 May is also missing part of the attachments?
Uh, June 2, or, no wait, was that on the list?
No, I couldn't complain, because I had not had a chance to read it, so...
All right, August 23rd.
Yeah, it, nope, it's not finished, nor is 12 September.
All right, so if I can just kind of, for context, modify this to, or understand that the modified motion is to approve, if, if I'm not doing this in the right order for everybody, please feel free to stop me, but effectively, at this time, based on the motion, we are approving January 11th, 2018, and April 26th, 2018, with the minor modifications requested.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion?
There may.
Would you tell me the dates again, the 2011, January 11th?
There, the ones that have these lines, January 11th, 2018, and April 26th, 2018.
Just those two?
Yeah.
Yes ma'am, all right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, so that was, there was also an aye from Commissioner Hoffmeyer, um, let's see, sorry, all right, do I have another motion regarding minutes? So, let me just, to clarify, we have five sets of minutes that are, that have not been included in a motion, can anybody, has, has anybody reviewed them?
It's actually six.
Uh, I count, okay, well, on this list, I count five, so that, but I can't make the motion, so if no one's prepared to make a motion, then we're going to move on. So I, it's, either we're ready, or we're not, and if we're not ready, then, let's hit that, let's, let's hit the road, folks, okay, super. All right, so those will stay on the list, all right, voucher review, do I have a motion?
Yes. I move that we approve, uh, anybody have the voucher numbers?
They will be, they're on this page.
I'm looking, sorry, I know, I'm looking.
Madam Chair, I move we approve warrants 560164 to 561034, 560, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm rounding one, sorry, 8113 through 8133, in the amount of $21,794.38, and transfer from the MNO account to the payroll account in the amount of $13,260.49.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I have a second.
All right, I think, I'm not sure about anybody else, but I know I need a minute to peruse.
Yes, it's always bad if we don't get this at the end.
Hey, so this is just a comment, but the, um, the gas, the, the gas and electric bills are staying, I mean, February was super cold, so, I mean, that's, yeah, absolutely, that's amazing, I mean, just looking at things like $2,600, when I'm pretty sure we were like...
65, maybe.
At least, right? I mean, well, it just, I mean, it's like, the efficiency's already, like, it's just the, like, man, that, it's just mind blowing.
What is our electric bill usually?
Well, usually, sometimes in the, I mean, it's, it's like several, like closer to 10,000, like five to 10,000, in a month, I mean, remember February, snow again, right? I mean, it was ridiculous, and so the fact that our electric bill was $2,600 is, is pretty amazing.
I think for, for what it's worth, and, you know, as we go down the road, you might need some minor adjustments to, to staffing levels, or maintenance level, to, to do that, it takes somebody on site, a couple hours, I think, at least, to do that type of stuff, so, I think, in the past, for whatever reason, I think for a while, we didn't have that, and I'm happy to be that guy for, I don't know, hopefully not a whole hell of a...
But, but that's really good, I mean, I think it's, it's good for us to know and understand that that's the level of effort, so, so there's a different, there's a different pay there, right, there's, so you're paying a different account, but you're doing it for a different reason, it's good to know, and it's good to know that you now have that expertise to, to give that feedback.
Glad to pass it on.
Yeah, exactly. Tik Tok, people, no, that's, that's awesome, it really is, it's really good, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for providing the, the payroll thing, thank you for that, I mean, it's, it's, like, to a certain extent, I'm, I'll admit, like, I'm like, ugh, what is this? Because it's the first time we've ever seen it, but it's nice to have that additional transparency, and, and so that we can ask questions about it, and be more familiar with it, so thank you. linear, but it's really interesting to look at the P and L, and understand that if you, if you take it from, if you take it from a linear perspective, that we're pretty right on or under in almost every case, so, just meaning, whether we overestimated for some things, or we're performing well, or, it's, it's, it's nice to see that, knowing that we'll have more wiggle room through the rest of the year, or hopefully so, I shouldn't say that we do, but that hopefully that'll be the case. Are there any, are, are there any more, are there any questions, or kind of just give me the head nod if you're, if you're good?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah, it looks good, I'm amazed there's, there's as much of the packet as there is there, I know, very limited staff in, right, Julie, I don't know, but I checked three months, Julie was in Eastern Washington for several days with a very sick family member, several of our other, and again, still very limited staff in, right, several of our other staff members are out here taking WSI classes or lifeguard courses, so, yes, just kudos to the staff for getting as much as they did, and, yes.
Thanks, thanks for saying that.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right, so it has been moved and seconded, that we approve the expense vouchers in the amount of $21,794.38, and payroll $13,260.49, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You said aye, yes, okay, so, passed unanimously. All right, committee reports. Guys, it's presentation time.
Corporate time, hit it.
Yes, please, we would love to hear from you.
I don't, I wouldn't assume that everybody has seen your email, our district emails, a lot of our district emails crashed last night, so you might want to summarize it.
So, nobody got the email?
I got it, but only because...
Were you able to print it out?
Okay.
Okay, I will, I will, again, throw myself under the O bus, because I have not had time to do that. Pat, Pat is generously allowing me to read off first, so I have one, I'll just kind of follow along, thank you.
So, we came last month and brought a couple things to the presentations regarding the lease, so, we wanted to propose a 20-year lease, and, and by, y'all, last week, it was a 20, a 15, or a four, or five, we would prefer a 20, with a first round refusal to purchase, if something happens with the letting, in, you know, future, so, we had talked about that, and I was wanting to see if we could finalize something from all of those, so we have something, so, that's number one, and the other one is, what the fields are budgeted for, I provided, what has been donated, do you have that up there as well?
Yes.
Okay, so some things that takes, you know, cash for us, and I don't know how it would work for you guys, but, if you guys need a bill, and if you call back an upgrade, or if you need something else, want to give us that money, I don't know how you guys want to work it, or how it works for your books, but, we would love to be able to use that for things that we have to pay cash for, some of that being fencing, some of that being some electrical, so on and so forth, um, I'm checking those here.
Okay.
Rex answered our mowing questions, I know we have garbage pickup, I don't know when that is, where it is, who's doing it, what time, we also have a cable across our house, so, we need to bring trash past that point, so, whoever's picking up the trash has access to it, then we could certainly do that, but I just need to know when.
And so Rex, you would provide, you would work directly with them on that, is that correct, is that correct?
What, I got the email last night, at night, so, you know, I haven't checked it today, I know, I...
You just kind of want to put it, like, out there.
Yeah, no, absolutely, but I'm just trying to make sure that we...
It sounds like Rex is on it.
Okay, okay, no, that's, and that's great, I'm just trying to make sure that, that we, that we all understand, kind of, this is, he's the one following up, so that we're not all, not that I would know how to follow up, but, but that, so you're a point on that, and you're aware of it?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Several years ago, we had a dumpster out there with island disposal, seemed like it was 50, 60 dollars a month, the reason it came out of there at the time is people just kept filling it up with furniture and stuff, but it, but it seems like, you know, you can go to a national park or something, and they got the, the bear lids, where you can only fit, like, small, medium sized stuff through the top?
Right.
Maybe they have an option like that, but it wasn't that much metal, hold on.
You can lock those, too.
Yeah.
There's a bar that goes over the top, you put a lock on it, so, obviously, only us and the garbage guys would have a key to that, and we would just dump stuff in there when we needed to.
And I think at the time, I think it was only like $26 every two weeks, or something, it wasn't, it wasn't all that much.
I'm pretty sure it hasn't happened.
You, pretty sure what?
Hasn't happened, yes.
Okay, but I think, so you're, so I think what we're suggesting is, can we look into what the cost of that would be, for something like that, I mean, it's similar to like Rocky Point Park, it's just not available unless you've rented the facilities, or you're somebody with a key, so, so you'll take the action, sorry, I'll get to, but you'll take the action item, I just want to write this down. Go for it.
My question was, do you need a big dumpster like that? I mean, do you generate that much trash?
I don't think that it would require, well, maybe, I, I can't answer that completely fully, because we have two extra teams this year, which means, obviously, parents and kids, so, possibly, close to it, so my thought on that was, if we put it up closer to the dog park area, because we have the cable going across, so that people aren't dumping furniture, then we could both use it, and I'm sure between both of us, we would be filling it up, and if we're not, then I can, you know, give everybody the heads up, that you don't need that, or they can tell me for two months, or, I don't know, but, I'll help you, help, you know.
So, so if we could maybe just get, like, a, a, sorry, I'm, an assessment of, here's what this would cost, and this seems to maybe meet our needs?
Yeah, I mean, we could, see what, let's just...
Okay, yeah, and then figure out the logistics, okay, cool, so, I, I think, somebody, anybody tell me if I'm, if I'm off base here, but, but I think, I'm sorry, I want to make sure that they're, because it's really for them, as much as for us.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
It's okay, I just want to be sure that we're all on the same page here, I didn't...
Who are you talking to me?
I, well, kind of, I just, I think, so first of all, thank you for all of this, because it's, it's helping us move forward, but if I understand correctly, I think we need to assess what we can and can't do legally, so, in terms of just writing you a blanket check versus reimbursing for specific expenses, so, so I think it's a couple of things, I think, one is, how, how much of a lease are we, you know, would we be able to, I mean, I think there are a number of legal questions that, and maybe they're not all legal questions, some of them are logistical, but, you know, could we offer it to you for a certain price? I'm not sure that legally we can do that, and I know that that came up before, I think we're at the point with having these requests in writing in front of us, I think we're now, like, we're at the point where we can go research them to see what's feasible for us to commit to, it's not a matter of us not wanting to commit, obviously, we know a year ago, we weren't sure where we were at, but I think we would have to look into the legalities of, like, how do we do this, because it's taxpayer money, and it, and we need to be accountable for it, so I think we just have to figure out, and it, and it's not, it's not to cast dispersions at you at all, okay, it's really more of a, how do we do this, because we know that, that, you know, we've offered this amount of money in terms of improvements, but I think we have to make sure that we understand how, how we can do it, instead of just writing a check that is just a blanket check.
Sure.
Yeah, so I, I think if we can do that research, Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
So are, are we to the point, are we to the point of another action item, do we want to have Rex and the baseball association, and with our lawyers saying what's best practice, see what we can, see what we can get to, and have him bring that back to us?
Well, I think the requirements, I mean, I think they've given us what they're asking for, and so I think it's for us to determine what we can, so, yeah, I think, I think it's, um, yeah, I think it's whether it's, it's having a, whether it's, it's an attorney, or it's our insurance company, or, you know, I mean, I think that there could be a number of those things, but that's, I think it's the research to understand what we need to, how we need to transact these things to make them work correctly, and then we can kind of, I don't want to say go back and forth, because I don't mean it that way, but like, does this work for you?
So, an idea, who's thought in the 10,000, so, I own a construction business, I could easily write an invoice for that, so that for your guys' purposes, it's legal paper enough, really paper stuff, if you have a receipt, and then I can, in turn, donate it, I can put it, donate it for me, and donate, donate all that, and that.
And, and I think that, how about this, I'm not...
That's an option.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and so I...
I might help looking into it as well?
Yeah.
Because I want to pay taxes on it, you know, that's my money.
I have a question.
Yes.
I remember seeing the list of things, that said, this has been donated, that's all stuff from the past, right? Are we going... Are we going back and paying for that, or this is going to be new improvements, I thought was what we were looking at? And if it's past, that's not a bad thing either, but I thought it was new improvements was what I sort of had in my head that we were wanting to do.
Everything that we've done this year is new improvements.
Okay.
And there's still improvements that I'm working on.
Yes.
So, kind of combo of both.
Okay. But, but they're all 2019, they're all 2019 improvements.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. And, and that's the, I think, important distinction.
And I was more or less trying to think of a way, because there's things we have to take cash for, that we won't get so many donations, and trying to think of a way of how we can use that to still help upgrades out there, and things that we need as well at the same time.
Yeah, and, and we're not trying to tie anybody's hands, I think we just want to make sure that it's, it's done in a way that's transparent to the taxpayer, that's, that's really, and, you know, follows whatever requirements that we need, and that's transparent, and, and so if it meets, if it meets, if, if we can find what that happy medium is, and I'm sure we can, we can figure out what that is, honestly, we probably, we might have even been talking about it longer than it'll take to figure it out, so that's why I'm like, okay, I'm talking too much. But seriously, I can admit it, I can admit it. No, so, but, but I think it's just a matter of, cool, thank you, and then I think it's, and, and again, I don't know, i- is that something that you, that, that you can do? Do you want anyone's help with it, just in terms of workload balancing?
Well, I can let you know if I need help with that.
Okay.
But I think to summarize, last meeting, the idea was that, well, you know, we have budgeted this money, just $10,000, and so we need some way of accounting for that, so we're all set.
Mm-hmm.
And...
That's what Merrill, Mr. Merrill had asked for us.
Right, absolutely, and so for us, it's a breakdown, but, so this is the what, and, and what we're talking about now is the how, right? And, and the how, like, the what matters for taxpayer transparency, the how actually matters as well. And so it's, it's, it's really, I don't, I don't think, I don't know that anybody has an issue with the what. I think it's that, I think we want to make sure that how it's executed is appropriate, and I heard the same thing from you as well, so that's the, the what we need to have figured out.
Okay.
Cool?
So, there is two things that we've already been talking about, the lease and the reimbursement side.
Yep.
So, you'd say that the lease is also, you want to be put on hold to look into it more?
Well, I think we need to, we, we need to ensure, it's not only that, but also the right, the right of refusal. I'm, I'm not sure that we have the right to do that, because it's a taxpayer-owned property, but I'm not sure that we have the right to give preference, for example. Maybe I made that up, right? And if I did, I'm super sorry, but, because I didn't mean to, but it's, these facilities are all owned by the taxpayers. You know, at the moment that they were donated to the district, they became, they, they're owned by, effectively by the, the district and thus the taxpayers, so we just have to make sure that we can't, that we can commit to a timeframe and terms that we're legally allowed to. And, you know, so that's, that's, that's really the, like, why. It's not that it's on hold, I think it's that it's, we're, it's pending review, how about that? You know, meaning like, are these terms that we can accept? Can we do this? And if we can, I don't know that anybody has a problem with it, you know, I, I mean, I guess this is a time for discussion, if we do have concerns about anything that's on there, but I think we just have to look into the legality of it.
So, it's fair fighting?
Right, exactly.
Well, I have a problem with it, I can't believe we're even talking about leasing private or public property, the taxpayer's property, to any organization, like, to tie it for them only. No, it's for the use of all the taxpayers. You guys have totally improved it, I'm happy for you to be out there always, forever, but it's, again, you've been paying us money to use it as well, and you've made good use of it, and no one else wants to, but it's like, what if someone else came along and said they wanted to use it? We have to give them equal opportunity.
Sure.
We do, as far as I'm concerned, that, you know, maybe I'm wrong, maybe we can give away the taxpayer's property for a dollar a year, I don't think so. I'm done, sorry, that's, that's my thought on it.
I have many of the same concerns, because I think, first of all, that a dollar a year is, you know, it's not really a lease.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that it needs to be astronomical, but I think it needs to be more in line with, with something, to be, to be exact. And I also, I agree with you on the, like, the whole selling thing, because I do think that that is something that we can't really say now.
Can you jump in?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So, I mean, I think the way it's always been out there, or I should say always, for the last decade and a half probably, you know, Babe Ruth has rented the, the ballfield course in the Clope Valley Park, and their, their scheduling has been given preference. They have still shared with, if a softball club wants to rent it from the district, or, or if the, or if the little league wanted to rent it, but it was always, anybody that rented it had to fall in line behind their scheduling. So, maybe, maybe a long-term race, maybe a long-term lease, maybe that's just the wrong wording, I mean, maybe you're calling in an anchor tenant agreement or something.
And that's, I think that's a great point, okay.
I think it's probably, probably just wording there, and I, I know that, I know that they are, they are more than willing to share with anybody out there.
And as far as I, they do deserve priority, absolutely, and I know how terrifying it must have been when we went down in flames with the levy, and you're just like, oh, what the... But it's like, lucky for you, it doesn't cost a lot to maintain that, so, you know, I don't think you're in the same situation as the pool with doors shut in and stuff like that. As long as you can mow the field, you can still use it when it belongs to the taxpayers.
And I think as far as the price, you know, whether, whether it's a dollar a year, or whether it's $1,500 a year, somehow attaching, somehow attaching the, the value that they're adding and the donations and stuff, somehow attaching that to where the public sees that at least.
Absolutely, I don't have a problem with that, I just, calling it a lease, and then it, to me, would just, and nobody else could use it, and it's like, that's wrong.
And I don't, so, so I think some of the points that we're saying are, we would believe it's not, it's not exclusive, right? It's a non-exclusive agreement. It would be preferential, but not exclusive.
Yes.
I think the other thing about it, I, I completely agree with, with you in that, Commissioner Hoffmeier, in that perhaps how it could be structured, and we're not trying to make this more difficult than it used to be, but perhaps how it could be structured is, you know, this is the price based on thi- this much added value, right? So, in other words, if you're making this many improvements to it, we're not going to charge you, or we'll only charge you what that difference is, or something to that effect, because it's really then, I, I don't want to call it in kind, but, I mean, it's, it's a, hey, you did this to it, you can, you know, you can use it, which I know you all have been doing that, it just would be a better way to recognize it officially, and to give you value, which I'm not sure that we've done appropriately in the past. Is that, how does, what do you guys, okay?
You guys tell us.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, okay.
I want to ask you a question right now. So, do you guys pay right now, you pay, this is new, so, do you guys pay a certain amount each year to the, to the board, to the district?
District.
Yes, how much is that?
Last year was 750.
So, I don't understand why we charge 750 dollars, and then with the promise that we're going to budget $10,000 that we never give to them.
The $10,000 is to approve the facility, the 650 is, that's what they, or 750 is what they paid to use the field in for this 650, it's like, it's not a very long period of time, so you guys use it, but...
Be able to July?
Oh, that is longer, longer than this.
But, but I don't understand, but, but what I don't understand is the $10,000 we never give to them, we've never budgeted for this before. This isn't, this is a new line item ever, at least in my time on this board, this is a new line item ever. Like, there's never been one, so it's not that we promised the money and we didn't give it to them. Quite frankly, they were passed over, ignored, what, I mean, you know, overlooked, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's all honest, it wasn't intentional, it just, things went that way, and then suddenly, you know, oh, hey, we need things, oh, oops, like, boy, why haven't we been doing this? So, it's new. Right.
How much has been on this budget, that you guys have budgeted for those fields, not including the dog park? What is the, what is the annual budget that you guys have set for that area?
In terms of improvements, or in terms of operations and maintenance?
In general.
I, I don't know the answer to that, 10,000 for improvements, the...
No, I'm saying, Pat, you said that's a new line item.
Right. Oh, it is, zero, it was absolutely zero. And so this year at 10,000, it's, it's, it, you know, for us, I mean, while it might require more, it's, it certainly is an improvement. So, in the past, at least four to five years that I've been on this board, I'm fairly certain it was always zero.
So, the 750 that they paid you every year, that goes to what, just mowing and what?
Porta potties, mowing, and water.
Even though our association has paid some of those porta potties in the past?
Um, all, I, it's awesome, and so understand that we love the dog park with the ballfields, and I know you're two separate people, and they need nothing, but, yes, we, it's all part of that.
Commissioner Harden? Sorry.
I, my one thing about your proposal, it's, and I maybe am unsure about this, it says, with the allotted $10,000 stated in the levy, it's not really in the levy, it's in our budget. So, you know, it wasn't that the...
Why do you know that, Phil?
Yeah, no, I'm just, I think it is a difference.
Clarifying, yeah.
Yes.
And this, I mean, this isn't a legal document we're signing, but, but just point out the difference.
Sure.
Okay, all right, so...
So, so as we're, as we're sending Rex to, to talk to legal insurance, any, any of those people he needs to, is this, before we send him off in a direction we don't want to, maybe is that, is the consensus of the board that they're, that they're rather comfortable with, with some of those terms, the length, the, the money, or is there, is there some...
Well, I, I heard, I heard, no.
And that's, that's why I was asking.
Right.
I mean, let me, so, just, just a shot in the dark, just a total shot in the dark. So, they paid 750 a year in the past, maybe 20 years is a little long. The levy increase was 17%, I believe, right? So, maybe, maybe you say 750 a year, times the 17%, that's probably just shy of 900 a year, and maybe, maybe you'll look closer to 10 years, would, would that be something the board would be more comfortable with, just so Rex can come back with, with something solid? Because right now, I, I don't think he would know what to ask the lawyer just yet.
Well, I think it's, I think the term is definitely, I, I think I was looking for some general advisement in terms of, is it, so, so for me, some of the questions I would ask are, would you want to extend terms beyond the end of the next levy, for example? That's what I would look at, is, because really, we can't, we can't necessarily commit longer than that, and that might not be long enough, but I think, I, I think looking at, so with our expectation, and sorry, I'm doing a little probably foreshadowing here, but, but looking at our pricing, like costing structure and then pricing, I think that, I think that should help us drive at least an annual, like, for this year to go up in subsequent years, no more than, you know, I, I think that kind of verbiage...
No more than 3% or whatever.
Whatever, whatever we think, yeah, is, I mean, I think without, you know, no more than this amount increase.
I think, for example, the statute contract says no more than 10%.
And, and maybe that, maybe just a little more just to be safe, in case there's something that would require, you know, us to ask a little bit more, but, but not necessarily exercise it if we didn't need to, right? Because for, for me, some of this really comes down to doing the actual, like, doing costing, and then looking at, what does that mean in terms of rental, like, time and hours, and then how much does that cost? I, I'd rather associate it with something concrete than just arbitrarily pick a number, and that could go either way, that could make it, that could make it less expensive as well. And, and part of that is, is if we've got those, that basis, that basis would then apply to anybody else, but we may have, you know, one, they'd have preference, and two, there might be, again, that in kind, well, they did this much improvements to it, so therefore we're waiving this, you know, because we got, for example, an invoice for this much, you know, we're gonna, you know, we're writing this, not writing it off, because that's the wrong term, but you know what I mean? And so they could offset that amount, that revenue with an improvement.
Yes.
Okay.
And just for the 10,000, I'm going to speak to that really quickly.
Please do.
I don't think there's a way we can write them a check for 10,000, and let them have a nice day. They can submit invoices to us for specific purchases, if there's something they have to pay cash for, as long as they can submit a receipt to us, we can do a reimbursement for that. And so our line item in the budget is 10,000 to spend on the ballpark, but that is the district spending that, as the district improving the ballfield, so, and I think if we do it that way, it keeps the counting side kosher.
I, I think the other part for us that's important is it, is this year and in future years, it, it also retains our visibility to what we did, and, and I only say that as somebody who has at one point said, can I have the last seven years of P&Ls? And, and the problem that we, you know, and then like, oh, they don't look anything alike, you know, I mean, we, we're, we're at a much more mature and stable place, but where you can, you can then line up and compare things, and so us entering into that, with that kind of visibility, I think is really good, it's healthy for us. All right, so, you, you got, you got this one for next steps, and you will reach out if you need any of our help, even if it's just administrivia because of workload balancing. Is that fair?
Administrivia?
Yeah. Sorry. So, guys, how about, so we'll fol- we'll follow up, and then we're, we're just going to keep, we're going to keep this on our radar every month until we get it done, is that, so we'll just, I mean, and, and I know that the hope is that, that shortly we can have it done, it's not a matter, we're not trying to drag this out, but we won't lose sight of it either. Is that, I mean, I know I can't commit to it, because I think it depends on what the answers are, hopefully we'll get good answers that, and we can agree on terms at either, you know, at next month's meeting, or whenever the, the first opportunity to do so is.
Okay.
Well, thanks.
So, I had a question, number three.
Okay. Number three, sorry, I don't know, I, again, I'm, I'm at a loss with some of this, but number three.
Is that the last, will you paragraph?
No, number three, one, two, three.
I don't, I don't know, sorry. Is this, is this the...
Now, we have cable crossed. There was a cable attached on pole pole.
Do we, do we not have one still?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, go ahead.
I didn't get, what did you say?
Do we not, do we, we, we don't still have a cable out there?
So, I noticed the cable was there, but somebody had put something on there so we couldn't use it, so we cut the, we put a lock on it.
Okay.
So, we cut the lock off, put the cable crossed, we have a lock on there now, we have a key to it. Are we allowed to do that? It was already pre-existing, but I want to make sure I'm, you said it's...
I would think as long as...
It's taxpayers.
As long as the director has, or someone...
Okay.
I, anyone else have a problem with that? I don't.
And, and I think we had talked about, at some point, researching a gate, well, I'm not, I don't think that we have talked about it, I know we talked about it. Sorry, that's, I'm like, that sounded a little too conditional, and I don't know, I don't know where that fits on, in all of this, it's probably not a tomorrow thing, given everything that we have happening here, but...
It was my understanding that the cable was put up by people from the dog park.
We put it up.
I'm glad you all know, last two, three years I...
Yeah, we, we put it up.
Yeah.
Because it was, it was intended to deter, you know, unauthorized use of the park, as well as vandalism, as well as garbage dumping, but...
Drug deals.
So, at, at some point, I, I think that, that's it, I think it needs to be locked, I think that's a great thing, and as long as he has a key for now, at, at some point, as we have an extra 20 bucks or something, and we may not right now, but it would be advantageous to get a cipher lock on it at some point, that way I come at the number That way, I come at the number if they do need to get in there.
Gotcha.
For the drug use, etc.
The, the dog park's
And the problem with the cipher lock is, is once, you know, it gets out there and you have to change it.
I know, you have to change it pretty rapidly, you do. And then the other thing is, real quick, and I haven't talked to him in about a decade. And I know, as far as legal, I think we're under, I think we're under some type of contract with Nathan Manning's dad. But Paul Newmiller is a very good real estate lawyer in town. If you could reach out to him, maybe, maybe he's willing to do a pro bono for an hour or something. He's right over here in the Love Cabin building. Last name's Newmiller, N-U-E.
Sure it's not any U?
It might, I totally drained my, let's see.
I went to school with the Newmiller.
I totally drained my brain today in Seattle, totally.
No, that's, but that's a good idea. But, you know, they, lawyers typically have to do some sort of pro bono stuff. And we think we're a good cause for that.
Do you want me to tell me what it's going to be?
Really? Awesome.
All right, so, we have
He swims here.
So, we have a
So, cable is fine.
A cable is fine.
I'll make sure that you have a key.
Thanks for asking, though.
Yeah. And then also, we have a possible grant from PSE, but we're not going to pursue it if we can't get, if you guys don't agree, if you don't want power out there. So, do you guys want power or?
I, I think, I think we do. I mean, I, I think we want power out there.
Could get our cameras out there, we want some day.
Yeah.
And, um, do we want power? I mean, well, power would give, you'd have lights, since you can have night games. But, in the summer, it stays late, so, light so late.
Well, well
They can't have lights out, they're just in the fireplace.
I think Well, they probably would be short enough.
Yeah, and pay just for scoreboard pits and machine snaps.
And it doesn't, does it, is your grant going to cover the whole cost of getting electricity there?
I don't know.
Oh, because that would
But, if it's not an option, then I'm not going to keep pursuing it. But, from what I understand so far, getting power to there is what the grant is for.
Okay.
After that, then, that's a totally separate deal, but.
I think it would be nice to have power there myself. I mean, because then you could use, it would make the, the ball fields much more versatile for other use, maybe in the winter or when the ball, you know, when you're not using it.
Absolutely.
It would help.
Yeah.
We would have everything up generators right now, so, it would help. But, once again, if you have
So, you are using generators out there?
I'm sorry?
You are using generators out there?
Correct.
First time.
Well, ventilation machines and things for the kids that require power.
Played softball in the old days.
So, you know.
Balls and bats.
Okay. Does anybody have any, actually, I should, it's not, does anyone have an objection? Do we, do we support pursuing that? I personally do. We don't want to waste this time.
Yeah. I, no, if ever, if no one else has a problem, I, I don't really have a strong problem. I just, it was just something I thought, do we need that? But, no, if you're using a generator, then by all means, we should put power out there. I think.
Okay.
As long as we don't have to pay for it. We'll pay for the power once it's in, but if you can get PSE to pay for getting it out there, then.
Well, and I would, if, I, I think it's the making it available to us. I think we would still have to, if I understand correctly. It's, it's making it available there, not, not, right, not installing it. I mean
Well, I have an election for that, but that's
Okay. And, but, but that, but that's not necessarily, so, that's a different thing. But, but again, a park improvement.
Recognize, yeah, we saw that someone hooked it up, but they have to get the line there.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that that's, because I'm like, that's not what I'm thinking.
Okay. No, you're right.
Okay. All right.
It's gonna take a little bit, but not as much as it would to get the electricity all the way there. Or, whatever you call that.
Right. But, again, I think if we, if we consider this an asset of the district and we consider it for multi, you know, multi-use functions, then it's, it's what needs to happen. Okay, right? Because other, that's part of it, is when things come up, like, oh, what can, what else can we use for? Nah, we can't do that up there. Nope, we can't do that up there. And so, so it sounds, I mean, I, we're not gonna turn on a dime on you and be like, oh, we never said that. Or, we don't remember that. Like, I, I think it's cool, and if we can help you, at some point, I would assume we must, we, we, we would have to. But if we can help you pursue that, let us know.
The grant would either be approved or disapproved, and at that point, you would be in your guys' hands. I'm just doing some labor.
Right. And I'm assuming that as part of the grant process, as the owners of the property, we would need to submit something as well. Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is let us know how we can help.
Okay.
Okay? Because that's, that's actually, we're sounding super clinical about this. I think it's super exciting. Like, I think it's, I think it's awesome. So, if we can help you, please, like, you know, this is what we need, you know?
I'll let you know.
Okay, please do. Awesome.
Commissioner Hoffmeier. Roy, I think this was the longest committee report ever. And, but I think we've ascertained multiple very good things out of it. And just as the Clover Valley Committee Chair, the only thing I would say is, for the last 10, 15 years, there's been one team out there. Now, they're up to three teams, 45 kids, all their parents are out there, grandparents. There's probably 10 coaches out there. I mean, so the increased visibility that it will give the district down the road, maybe the next levy won't be all that close, just like our very last one was. And, but it looks like a different place out there than it used to. I, I know, I know a lot of us made it out there a few years ago for, I think we had a meeting out there at one point.
We just had a walk, a walk around.
Yes.
It, it looks, it looks nothing the same.
So, that's what I would recommend. It looks nothing the same.
Yeah. So, do we wanna, when do we want to do that? Or do, do we want to do it individually? Do you want to do it as group?
Let's do it as a group, and that way, they can meet us out there and show us what they're gonna do or have done.
Would you be willing to do that? Are we? Okay. We would, we would appreciate it. And the opportunity to just show off, I think, what you guys have done. Because, like, I'll admit that, that it's, that's not really my area of concentration. So, show me what you did and I'll be impressed. I, I believe it, and I'm sure some of it's visible to me, but probably some of it isn't. Just being honest, I looked at, I looked at the roof a couple of years ago. And I didn't know what I was looking at then either.
I don't think they got on the roof.
Yeah. I'm on the roof. Sorry, it, that came up recently, so I just wanted to mention that.
Is there a time, date that works better?
We're out there right now until second, second to third of April. Monday through Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00. And Saturday, that, that day changes every time, but
So, if we, if we came at one of those times, would you be able to show us? You know, we wouldn't be
Uh, don't come around at 5:00, because I usually get things going, and don't come around at 7:00.
Okay.
But, yeah, someone would be ready by then.
Is it still light out there? Yeah, it's still light out there.
Yeah.
So, if we
Practice is over now.
Six o'clock, some evening, next week?
Oh, no, maybe. What night?
Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday, no, can do.
Okay.
Wednesday, can do. Next, so, could we, could we do, are we, are we pinning you down too much? Okay. All right, so, what we're saying is, next Wednesday, April 3rd, at 6:00 PM, ballpark.
She already has a shoe polish made up.
Are we touring the dog park too?
We may as well. We may as well.
I want to have my shoes on to wear.
Not ones you love.
It's a very well-kept park. Thank you very much. I get, I get why it's funny, but it's very well-kept. And so, we would obviously need to, I know you know this, but create a, just a informational meeting notice that no, just, so we would, obviously, we would not be, we would be getting a tour, we'd be listening, but we would not be discussing district business.
No decisions will be made.
Correct.
Rex, could you reach out to Chris or Mike, one of the dog park guys? Thank you.
Any questions for myself or Ryan?
No, thank you, thank you so much for sticking with us. We know that things aren't speedy, and, and I'm sure that that's pretty frustrating. So, thank you. Yeah, I, and I, yeah. So, I mean, thanks for being patient. And I think we're, I think right now, I think we're on the cusp of, okay, we have requirements in front of us, or requests, or whatever. Now, we just need to tweak it to get to something that we can agree to and you can agree to.
And, you know, be mindful of, the whole reason for this is because we're, we're willing to do things.
I know.
But we don't want it to go away.
Absolutely.
We don't want to put the hard work into it and have it hold out from underneath us, and then we're actually pretty good at that.
Right. And I don't, well, I mean, I, I hope you can recognize that. I think, I think everyone in this room has good faith toward it. But, but I understand that, that part of it is, is you want to ensure that that continues in the future. And that's the security that you're looking for. Totally get it.
Right. Well, we're, and we're trying to build something more than just, you know, we have some baseball. We're trying to build, you know, core for the high school and get the movement up and
A program.
Yeah, a program, exactly. So, something in guarantee, I don't care if, you know, it's a lease or, but whatever it is, you know, whatever legal legality we need to do. And we're open for suggestions. It was just, I just want to get something out there so we can, yeah, just keep pushing forward and get this done.
I would say, your program is the core of what this district is supposed to be about. Health and welfare, especially children. But, unfortunately, again, it's the taxpayer's property. So, there are issues.
Like you said, whatever legality, you know, we're open, we're just, you tell us, you know, and I've talked with my lawyer about this. If you guys want to be a lawyer, we'll find a happy meeting.
Cool.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm gonna take off.
Yep, thank you so much. Thanks for, yeah, thanks for all your time.
Thank you for listening.
Thanks for coming, Ryan.
And then, next Wednes, next Wednesday, 6:00 PM.
I'll be there.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, so moving on, action item review, we don't have anything, or that's not presently active. Unfinished business, employee handbook.
I would like to move that employee handbook to be approved as written.
Second.
Hold on one second.
All right, discussion?
Looks beautiful.
Thank you. I simplified it so that it's a lot less for the, as we've discussed in the past, it's a lot less for the 17-year-old lifeguards to read and have to wade through. And I put a lot of stuff in the appendices or in the other two of the documents.
I actually still, like, I think I was hoping for a working session, like, an actual working session to go through feedback, but, because I do have a lot of updates to it, I just, I mean, it's, it's a matter of bandwidth. So, but that's, that's my feedback. Commissioner Harden?
Well, I, I mean, I have, I thought it was, you did a fabulous job on it. But being the picky word person
Oh, that's good.
That I am, I have a few thoughts. So, well, they start on, well, do you want to?
Well, well, I think we have to decide whether, I, I personally don't think a board meeting is the time for us to go through this in detail. I don't, I don't think that that's the appropriate forum. I think a working session, if you recall when we did that, and I'm looking at you, because you were, because you were there, and you were there, but when we sat, at least I think you were, with the CPA and we asked questions. Right. I, I think a session like that, where any of us who wants to give input, we do a public meeting notice, there is no, you know, there's no, so, so if people want to show up and listen to us discuss the handbook, they can. But that we go through it page by page. I, I personally find, I mean, I'm not trying to waste anybody's time. I actually think it's the right way to do it, because I don't think this is the forum for it.
Fine. I, I wish, you know, someone had mentioned that earlier.
Well, I, I'm mentioning it now because it's relevant now. I've, I've been trying to get to this stuff. And, and recall, I also have reviewed this three or four times in my tenure as well.
And I remember that.
Right. And, and so reviewing it again, I'm trying to take notes and do this mindfully. I'm sorry that it didn't happen on a timeframe that, that we originally agreed. I know I'm the one, I'm the one who said, "Let's wait on this." I, I think, you know, if we could, that's great.
When do we, when do you want to meet and do this?
Just do the whole thing, whatever we do.
Right. And it's, and to me, it's, it's whoever has interest, like, meaning if you don't have feedback, if you want to participate, great. If you don't, that's okay too.
And we'll do all three together. And I will say
Well, we haven't reviewed three, so then
No, but that's because I realized when I was doing the minutes, there, I don't have all of the policies, were not in the handbook, and I need to go through all the resolutions and find them. And I planned, I decided to go to Maui for a couple of weeks. So, I'm gonna hopefully do it this week, not this week, next week. Get in and look through all the resolutions and all the old minutes to find the resolution, the policies that are nowhere else.
Okay. And so, I mean, there are, just, just real quick, procedure-wise, if, if we have, if we have the one reviewed and feedback, we can go through that one and do the other one subsequently. Or, if, we can, we can make it one big thing.
Well, you have, everybody has the first two. You just don't have the policy one. And the policy one, all it is, is policies that have been approved. I haven't rewritten those at all. I'm just putting them in one document.
Right. I, I, I understand that. I, I'm, this is process, right? This, there's no, there's no judgment, there's no accusation. I'm asking how we want to do it. If we want to do it all in one, then we have to make sure that we have received them and that we have time to review them. Because it's not a matter of whether they've changed or not. It's a matter of whether we think that they're correct and relevant.
Right.
Right. And so, we still need to review them.
What I, what I said, and apparently I didn't say it clearly, is that everyone has the employee handbook and the executive handbook.
I'm aware of that.
Okay. That's what I meant, we could, we could do those.
Well, we, but, okay, but that's not, you said we could do all three. If we want to do two, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Because if we wanted to do three, we would have to wait to receive the other one, have time to review it, etc. If we want to do two, let's do two. Right. It's, it's whatever, it's, it's either way. Mr., Commissioner Hoffmeier, sorry.
I'm all for a special meeting, or even two if we need it. I just want everybody to be mindful of the, the current composition of the board could be changing in just eight short, regular meetings. So, we do gotta, we, we gotta tick-tock almost, if you will, right? And there are certain things, I feel this board is, with how hard of work that we have put in as a whole. I think we have to move and we have to get this handbook, we have to come to a consensus.
And, and we're trying to do that right now.
And I think we will, I think we're on the right route there. We also, we have some advertising policies that are really close, we need to get those passed this year.
It already has been, it was passed last year.
Yeah.
We, we have a policy.
The one for here or Culver Valley? We did Culver Valley, I meant the one for here.
We, we passed a general advertising policy last year.
That's good.
Yep.
It's in one of my sets of minutes, you put the policy in there.
I didn't know we had totally finalized that, so that's awesome.
It's very generic.
And another thing I think we need to get going on is, I...
Is it, is it about the, if it's not about the handbook, can it, can it wait?
It's just the, the policies that go with it. I just don't want to put that off too long, that's all.
No, and I, all I have to do is get in and, like I said, find the ones that are hidden in the resolutions and the, and some of the minutes maybe, although, or wherever they are hidden, but they just weren't all in the handbook, so I just have to find those ones. Because I, I do want there to be something that has all the policies. We should have a place where, "Where are our policies?" And you go in and look, you look, you think, "Oh, here it is." Or, "We don't have a policy." Oh, we should make one.
And looking back at the old handbook, I think the last time it was updated was in, like, nineteen ninety-nine or something goofy like that, and it was at a December meeting, and you could tell it was just half of a deal passed at the last second because they were leaving. And so, I, I want to make sure we...
Right, but we're...
That we get it this, this spring or summer, is all.
I, I think what our objective, if I understand it, is before we start hiring again en masse, if you will, that, that's the objective, and, and I think we're almost there, but the point is just that I don't think this is the right forum, we're deciding what the right review process is, and then we will, we shall do it.
And it's fine, if we could, so, that's what I would like.
What's your, which is, so, I would like a workshop, because I think it's going to yield the best effort.
Yes, I agree.
How would you like, would you, do you want to do two? Do you want to wait to do three?
Let's, let's do two.
Okay.
Do, do one soon, to do the first two, get those two done.
Yep.
And then as soon as I've got the others, we can meet and you can, and that way everyone can read all of the things, which are fascinating, but, anyway, so...
All right, so, is this something, do you want to participate in this?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
Of course.
I'm, I'm not sure if I didn't have feedback that I would want to, that's fine. But, okay, so...
I, I, I like the way it's written, the, the reason I would want to participate is I, I might not like a proposed change, and then it might be relevant, right?
Very smart.
Well, I think the idea is that we, because it would be a workshop, we're not voting on, and so, either way, I mean, of course, you're, of course, anyone can come to it, but, of course, I was trying to look for a time of day, but I think the point would be, would be that we would have then an updated draft, that would be, that would then be presented again for acceptance, but if we want to, so if we have to, if we need to set a date, then if it needs to be in the evening, next week is out for me, personally, and... I could do the eleventh, if that works.
I can't do the eleventh.
All right. The ninth?
I can do the ninth.
Evening of the ninth? Uh, sorry, it's Tuesday? Sorry, Tuesday, April ninth? Does that work? Okay, at six or six-thirty?
Either side.
Six. Why do you always meet at six-thirty?
Well, can, can we, let's, let's, sorry, I just want to...
You're good.
We, we didn't have a whole lot of things on here, but we are, we are delving into each one. All right.
Right, oh.
Is there a problem doing here?
Oh.
We have a dog swim here.
...........................................................................
And what time is that?
I think that we were saying, what do you say?
Yeah, but just had it get...
Well, as long as the...
..................
So, but is, will this room, sort of, be...
Well, if, I think we don't want to, that, that's an, that's an event we don't want to conflict with. Apparently, one of us lives with four dogs, one of us does not.
(dog barking)
Oh.
Could you guys keep it down out there?
Sorry, okay.
No, I just, it would be, I mean, it sounds fun and funny.
It's definitely the final event of the evening, because clearly we're not...
I really want to go?
We're supposed to fix everything that might...
And it goes to one?
Okay, so that's not a good night for you.
It was intended to have, it's just speculation, what time to start.
Never mind.
So, all right, so does anyone, can anyone, the, like, I, the eighteenth?
Eighteenth? Eighteenth is fine.
Eighteenth, Thursday, April eighteenth? Would we, would we be able to be in here? How is that, how is that going to work?
You might be painting up something here.
Well, if we, if we need, we could actually, if, as long as it was early enough, I don't remember what time the library closes, but that would be another option.
The problem is the library closes to, I think it closes at seven, I want to say.
Okay.
That is a problem, so, what's the, Shane, what's the earliest you can get away from work?
Anytime after probably the eleventh, they could do anytime of day, probably.
Really?
Yeah.
So, maybe we could do the, the public, the library, that meeting, that's a good meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty booked up until after the tenth.
Okay, so could we do, would, one say the seventeenth work, like, earlier in the afternoon? I'm, I'm trying to just be creative here.
Yeah, that would be fine for me, I can't, I can't reserve it, because I reserve the reservation.
Sure, yeah.
If you can do that.
Yep. I, I think you need, we need some specificity here, but what does that mean?
Yeah, well, I would say, for me, I think after, like, two-thirty or three would be.
Okay, so could we say, because I think you also can only reserve it for, like, two hours, right? Is that...
I reserve them for four.
Oh, okay. So, if we could say three, if we could say three o'clock on, what did I say, the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, okay.
Wednesday, the seventeenth.
Yeah.
After three o'clock.
At the library. For instance.
So, so Helen, I just heard that as well, yeah. And that's going to be a workshop?
It'll be a employee handbook workshop.
But again, you know, it's just me?
Correct.
Wendy to reserve, sorry, just want to make sure that I got this, okay. All right. Thank you, because I, I, I realize that it's, it's frustrating, I'm, I'm, you know, I wasn't trying to minimize that, I just...
I just didn't think everyone would be up for another meeting, so this is...
Well, but, but I think, I think those are the kinds of things that either that or we launch it all on you and you have to sort it out, but then if you didn't do what I thought you should do, then we're back to where we started, so...
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of what we need to do.
It's fine.
I'm sorry?
Three.
Wait, what?
Yeah.
Oh, two, the first two.
But it's the two, sorry.
It is the employee handbook and the executive employee handbook that will be reviewed, page by page, discussed, corrected, or updated, I mean corrected, I mean updated, as, as needed.
Would it be helpful for someone that we've done so, to have a list of things, or if you come across something, send her that, so that you have a list of items that you're going to go over?
We could do that, if, if you have your scribbled out copies, you can give them to me, and if I don't agree, then we can talk about it specifically on that day.
Right, but then we need, we need our copies back.
Yes, absolutely. I will not, you know, I will, I usually...
I don't have the second one to give you yet, but...
I don't, I don't say that everything I wrote is perfect, because it's not, but it's like...
It's wonderful.
No, but there's changes to be made, and it's like, that's, it's a strong name, it's fine.
I'm waiting for the video.
It's so funny.
All right, so I'll give them to you later, we're, so moving on...
Yeah, write your name on it, and I will, I will give it back to you.
Okay. So, moving on, business plan, business plan twenty nineteen, and so, we, we all had the action items, to, list of new programs, we were, we were to get a document from, from Commissioner Merrill, unless we got it in the past two days, I didn't see anything, but, okay, so, how about, let me, let me take the action item here to follow up with him, sorry, I'm, I'm running out of, I'm running out of note space. Let me see here, so business plan twenty nineteen. Thank you, it's, I'm, I'm good, I just, I love, I like reading here. So, here's what I will intend to do, is to follow up with him regarding a format, because that's what he was supposed to provide us, and then, and then we, he and I can kind of figure out a, so this will be another independent activity that will need to be done by a date before our next regular meeting, so that, that all of these things can be compiled, I'm just putting it out there, because that was, that was our intention to do around this time anyway, but then we'll get that put together, get that out to everybody, and, and give a date when we want those inputs for things like new programs with the corresponding information that he, that was requested, but we'll give you a format to do it in. Cool? Okay, I'm probably gonna, my, my suggestion to him is probably going to be to keep it pretty simple with something like, either a Word table or an Excel document, because I don't think we need to make it more complicated than it needs to be. So, we'll do that, is there, is there anything else we need to cover with that one right now?
No, but while we're talking, you mentioned that we still need the printed copy of the minutes.
Do you remember what date they are from? Or, there's a specific copy minutes that had...
The one that he passed his laptop around and...
And, and...
What's the fire department doing?
There. It's fire management.
And, and so, in this case, it's, it's regarding the designations of auditors, correct? That, so just, okay, I just want to be sure that I'm capturing that correctly.
Yeah, it's the one that specifically names Rex as auditing officer and then Commissioner Merrill, Commissioner Hawley as the...
Okay. I, I, I will. All right, so, improvements for Dog Park fence line?
Sean, well, I say that, it's like, I know nothing about it at all, and I, I haven't heard anything about what's been going on, but I know that last, last month when we talked, the PD was going to come help with that, but I, you know, none of the Dog Park areas are here, so, maybe we'll find out next Wednesday.
Okay, so who, okay, but, so who, who has ownership on, of bringing that back to us? I think if we could establish that here.
Let me, let me talk about that during my director's report a little bit, just, okay?
I, can, can I just get an owner? Is it you? I mean, it, the, the part on here, if I'm doing the notes, there's no reason to bury it in a report, so...
Okay.
I just want, sorry, I'm not trying to, I, I just want an owner.
So, we have a bunch of folks who are coming to the facility on the ninth of May, so I was thinking today that, because nothing seems to be going on, you know, just twenty, perhaps we could get a small team of people from, from that group and do the Dog Park things, so that would, I just haven't had a moment to call anybody.
Okay, but, so you would own, trying to, trying to work that out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I wasn't trying to get the cart before the horse, but it'll make more sense in the minutes this way, as the acting secretary for this meeting. Community Advisory Board. Okay, so, here is what I, this is, this is my proposal, based on, we had questions, it, it kind of just keeps kind of, it's kind of an amoeba kind of moving around, and here's, here's what my suggestion is, and I would love to hear what other folks think about this, I would love to see us create a subcommittee, that can then kind of take the reins with, start making it happen, start, start fleshing it out, so I know that initially, part of my concern was, what are all the details? And I realize that sometimes kills enthusiasm, and might not represent how people really want to engage, and so, instead of stifling that, my suggestion would be, and, and as the acting chair for this meeting, I have the ability to create a subcommittee, I would say, let's do it that way, and if we find, and I did, I did discuss this with Chairman Merrill as well, if we find that it needs structure, we can always add more. The thing we can't do is if we overstructure it, we can't take it away. Well, we can't, we could, but it becomes more kind of legislative in some ways, and, and so in this way, can we just get it, get it going? Thoughts?
I like it.
Okay.
I thought the tour we ran like three months ago said that.
I've never heard anyone say that, so I, that, but, but, cool.
I, I think it's great, so, so the, because people keep asking me about what's happening, you know, people that I see in the pool mostly, and I wish that I knew all the answers, but I feel ignorant sometime, you know, I mean, if I am to answer, in fact, next Wednesday, I am going to be, there's a group of mostly aerobics people that meet occasionally for lunch, and Robin, Robin Bott asked me if I would, you know, talk to the group about kind of scheduling and what's happening at the pool, and I told her that I would, that I, I certainly have to go through past, you know, information that I've been given, and I think it was your, what you sent Rex, that you kind of outlined everything that's happening, which I will be having that in my hot little fist, and certainly anyone else that wants to be there, let me know, because it's one o'clock next Wednesday at, at the, the buffet down by...
Office.
No, 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 it's down by the dollar store, ninety-nine cents, so we're down there.
Okay, gotcha. The Asian buffet?
Yes, yes.
I concur with you, so many is the way to get stuff done.
Okay, so we will, we are creating a, I'm going to just call it for now, the Community Advisory Subcommittee, and appointing Chairman Merrill to it, Commissioner Merrill, and Pat, do you, Commissioner Harden, sorry, but do you, do you want to also participate with that subcommittee, or?
Yes, I think I would like.
Okay, so we are appointing Commissioners Merrill and Harden to the committee. All right.
As has been practiced, the directors are always part of that, too, correct?
He, I, not necessarily, I mean, I think that's, I think that's up to him to decide. We had a director who decided that for himself, so I think it's a matter of, it's the truth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
True.
Sorry, I did say it the way it's, it is. All right, so, so certainly, I, I think that he should be advised of any meetings or happenings, and therefore he can choose how he wants to interact. Okay. All right, pool shutdown schedule and review of potential improvements. Mr. Director?
Well, you have the outline.
Yes, I know.
Oh, here. Oh, it's what I emailed to you.
Yes. It was what was needed, so...
Okay, do we have, so we don't have copies?
I have a copy. That I will not give you, but I'm watching.
Good job, thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah, but well, yeah, I, again, like, that's... And sorry, I'm reading this, so, I'm just stating that for the record, this is the first time I've seen it.
Well, people are reading, can I, Rex, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are there, you know, since I'm going to be talking to this group of ladies, if you want to come, you're certainly welcome, but if you don't want to come, what are things that people could volunteer to do, say, "Well, the pool is closed"?
I think it depends on...
If you give me a list of suggestions, then I will relay those with the thought of them talking to someone here.
Unless you think it would, or give it whatever, discussion, I would be happy to come, like, you want, or...
Oh, no, I, I wouldn't, no, that would be great, it's one o'clock at the...
DH.
DH.
One Rowan.
It's, it's the, yeah, the buffet down next to the ninety-ninth, so, so I don't know if that's DH or what. I only go when I... It's, it's next one, the third, I think it's the third next Wednesday.
Yeah, that's the third.
All right, so thank you for this. Is, is there also a, so the other thing we had requested was a communication plan?
I'm sorry, I was thinking about that.
Okay.
Say it again.
The other thing that we requested in our special meeting was a communication plan.
Communication plan?
Correct.
That means nothing to me, I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, well, in our special meeting, the two things that we asked you for were a plan of action and a communication plan. plan of action and a communication plan.
Just reading the word to the public, because I had communication plan, and now I had no, when I, I changed it to something else, because I was like, what does that mean? And I couldn't remember, but now that you said it, thank you.
Well, that, I believe, is also in my report. The one that's not in the packet, I wanted to email to everyone. And what it, and I mentioned that we would do a weekly report, and based on what Commissioner, anyway, what he said about helping with it, that's why I mentioned that Commissioners would be adding two of our reports on a weekly basis.
And I think, so I think the question, so a communication plan usually just kind of outlines, here's the frequency, you know, here's the communication, here's the vehicle, here's the frequency, so that we have an understanding of what's going, what content is going where, and not necessarily specifically to whom, but that we have an idea of, and so, yeah, I read in here that there'll be an email going out. And so, I mean, I think it's an understanding of, okay, when are we looking to do that? If we're looking, if you're looking for our inputs, when do we need to have them by? It's, we're just trying to formalize this a little bit, so that everybody knows what's happening. And that's, in this case, that's everybody internally first, right?
Okay, so, to me, it's laid out pretty specifically. It says weekly, so that, and I was looking not at an email, but I was looking at, you know, putting it on our website. So, if you collectively want to...
Okay, right, weekly progress report, sorry. This is the first time I've seen this, so, okay. Sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to...
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if you feel so driven to create one of those things or several of those things, that would be great, I would invite you to do that. From your perspective, I assume that it's, you know, at different times, you will be wandering through the facility to see what kinds of progress is being made, I just see that as a regular report to the community. Simple.
I think my only concern about that is, I don't know what our traffic is on our website. Some of it structurally is, things are a little bit hard to find, so...
I agree, that's what you just mentioned, we need to change the structure, and I understand that that was created by someone else, and it's not really workable for our... So, suggestions on other things, I don't know what.
And really, I think part of this was an understanding of what that expectation was, and so part of it is, are we posting this on social media? Have we reached out to the newspaper? I mean, that's all part of a communication plan. I'm sorry, like, it's really tough for me, because I know what I mean when I say it. I can't know if people don't ask questions, that they don't know what I'm talking about. Just in general, I can't know that. But, so, I mean, those are things that I would expect that we're doing, and part of us asking the question is to make sure that we're capitalizing on the opportunity. Are we sending things to the chamber to include in their, not only in their newsletters, but as well on their website, for example, or not website, sorry, on their Facebook page? Because I think they probably have, while there's some overlap audience-wise, there's probably a lot that isn't. So, I mean, it just, in terms of, you know, where are we distributing it to? Those are the things that I would look at, to try to make sure that we're getting as much coverage as possible.
I would like that, because I find it extremely frustrating. It's so, I guess, only relying on one source is very frustrating, we're also very limited on our budget, and...
Right, absolutely, but the thing is, is if you publish content in one medium, so for example, if you put it on the website, you can always include a link to it with like a highlight or a picture, or something that drives someone to click that link to go to it. And that would be true for an email as well. I mean, so there are lots of different ways to utilize one piece of developed content in several ways. So, it's not a matter of saying, let's create original content for a number of different vehicles, it's, let's ensure that we are getting the same message out multiple places. And like, the chamber comes to mind, because they had some, they've had some posts recently, but I was like, oh, I would have never thought about them sharing that, that's super interesting. And it's like, well, you know, we're chamber members, and again, I think things like that, hopefully, would be of interest to other chamber members, and would, it would broaden our reach.
So, how would you like to talk about that with me?
I certainly, we can figure it out, you know, we can figure it out, unfortunately, yeah, I mean, we can figure out when we think that's going to happen. So, I mean, yeah, we can talk about that. Yeah. I'm taking, just, if you could just hold on one sec. This is the wrong one, because again, I'm taking... Yeah, I know. That's five, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to throw out there, you know, I think, trying to make sure the word gets out that we're closing, also to build some excitement about what we're doing. $50 or $100 worth of ad space on Facebook might go in incredibly long ways, especially since we're not in the middle of an election cycle. I mean, that would probably go way further. Also, the flyer that we have that kind of says the renovation or whatever, how that was worded, I mean, they could almost blast a picture of that flyer on Channel 10, and it would run through this vicious loop for 30 straight days, right? And everybody that flips through that channel would see it at some point. Also, you know, I think, once we're getting ready to reopen, I think we could have somebody come in and do a 10-minute video tour or something of the work that's been done, and they'll play that one there as well. I don't, being that it's a governmental channel, I don't think there's any cost whatsoever. I know they've been playing the tour of their clean water facility down there for about six months straight. So, that's a couple ideas I have, and I think Pat might have a few more here.
Well, no, I just want to, if we do a video of the completed thing, I think we should do a video of the before.
Well, we have a staff member who I think would probably be willing to do the before walk-around video, and then do Parker's videos on a weekly basis that we could post. We already have a YouTube channel set up, so they could post there, as well as be shared through the website.
I know at City Hall, they have a paper, like a one-page paper that you can fill out to put whatever you want on Channel 10.
On Channel 10, yes.
I don't watch Channel 10. How often do you turn it on?
Like, if you go to like, if you go to like Hilltop, Texaco or something, and get your oil changed, or if you go to City Hall and wait in line to pay your water bill, it's on a just constant vicious loop. So, but the other thing they play on there, they put a lot of the Go Carver football, baseball, soccer games on there. So, there is some people that come through for that. I don't know, I think, I think you, I think you reach a different demographic than what you do on social media usually, so I think that's probably advantageous. Yeah, I mean, all the social media avenues, really, I mean, you could probably get something worth by a lot of Instagram as well. To reach out to all of our partners, to, you know, remember as we were, when we were working on reopening the pool and going through that, that plan on policy, that we were really good about reaching out to our partners quite often, be it the school district or the Rotary. And we should definitely make sure they're in the weekly loop, I would say, if not, make a special trip to a few of those bigger partners. And the Rotary has been gracious with their money, et cetera, but I don't know how much we've been able to reach out to them and tell them how much their money has helped us, and what we've done and what we're doing. Just an idea.
Okay, so, May Work Day. Do we have an update on that?
Yeah, the last page. So, you're going to have a, since last time we had a clean-up day, and...
Yeah, no, it's not, yeah, it's more not specified, it's just more of how is it developing? Are there any updates? Yeah.
So, make sure that you have a list of everything that you want them to do and assign jobs. People love to come out, but they need to be told what to do, because if they don't know.
That's right. The, I'm pretty sure it'd be like a massive herding cats.
That's like crazy.
I'm really concerned, I mean, I'm not concerned about everything on that side, because, you know, we have professionals that are working on that, against people from all different backgrounds. I think the thing that's, I'd like to highlight is, and this is only happened the last two days, so, that's, you know, the combination of Home Depot, Office Max, Sherwin-Williams, major players that all indicated that they were involved, and that's, to me, is really impressive. So, I think that's important.
Could I make a suggestion that on the day that we're going to have all these people, you're talking about herding ants, that you have somebody...
Cats.
Oh, herding cats, okay, that's easier than ants, yeah. Could I just make a recommendation that you have a supervisor picked ahead of time that would be in each area to tell people what needs to be done in the area, which they may already know, but also show them what they, you know, that will be not necessarily, would not be doing the work, but letting people know what needs to be done in that area, what you want, or what you want.
Right.
You know, if they're going to be painting, what do you, how do you want to paint it?
Just go to, to things like...
Things like what? I'm sorry.
Painting, like we're, you know, we're kind of bound by the kind of paint we need to give, you know, it's a commercial paint, it's, because of, you know, our atmosphere here, so it's expensive, you know, it's $120 a gallon, but Sherwin-Williams is going to sell to us for $60, so it's half price, which is good, but we don't want just anybody using...
No, Mike, is it toxic?
Well, no, I'm just thinking, inexperienced painters...
Oh, not wasting it.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's water-based epoxy, I mean, you probably don't want to get it in your eyes much or nothing, I mean, nothing that a freshwater rinse wouldn't care of.
And I love the thing that's, at least this is my guess, that something like this has never been attempted, other than construction, and this is a big deal, and...
The only thing similar was coming at points in time, in the last 20 years, maybe one time under Bill Walker in his first year here, but that was at a point in time where they had 53 employees, so it was pretty easy to cause some people into work a few hours, right? So, to do it on such a skeleton crew with so many volunteer hours, yeah, I don't think there's anything even similar, never with the amount of work going on out there, especially.
So, will we have children? Because I think we need to put a low, you know, age one. Nothing, no one under, I don't know.
Say 15.
Maybe, yeah, maybe, but certainly not, you know, five-year-olds running around. Oh, look at my handprint!
Right, and I mean, there's also kind of like, is there a old harmless war release that people are signing? I mean, this is all stuff that every time we've talked about volunteers comes up, we just need to make sure that we have everything in place for those things. Okay.
Like, another worthwhile thing to find out, probably $40 for the whole day or something, is Keller Williams paying the LNI rate for the volunteers, or do we need to jump in on that? That's the only other question, I suppose. Good question. I know, for instance, such as Emerald...
Meaning their volunteers or meaning other volunteers?
Their volunteers, their volunteers.
But do we have to pay LNI for volunteers?
Yeah, I mean, such as Emerald, like Emerald Downs owning a horse even, so being an owner, if I go on the back stretch, I have to sign in, and Emerald Downs has to pay $2 for me to be back there for the day in case they get kicked in the head or something. Strange, huh? Even the volunteer work I've been doing here the last seven months, they've been paying my LNI rate, which is, I think it's $4 a month or something, it's not much. I mean, it's not much at all, but they have been logging those hours and paying that.
So, can we expect that for the April regular meeting, that we'll have a little more flushed out of what we think those activities are? Like, just in terms of like, from, like, I think we called it like this Saturday last month, but that we'll have a little bit more flushed out? It's not going to be complete, but a little bit more, and then understanding of kind of what types of, you know, like, who, I don't know, I don't know how to, like, again, I don't want to overregulate it, but on the other hand, like, oh, I want to do this, and it's like, right, but that's isn't a good fit, or, that we'll have an idea of what kinds of activities for the next meeting?
Just met with Keller Williams personally yesterday, so...
Okay, but...
Oh, no.
Right, and so, all I'm asking is that, oh, I'm sorry, we don't, am I still looking at the, I'm looking at the, oh, but so for the April 25th meeting, that we would have something a little more flushed out, because that'll be our next meeting before the actual workday?
Well, going into it, but Evan, you probably will have written the first interview to cover it.
Right, and I'm just talking about the activities for that May 9th, that's all I'm talking about. Right, that's, since that's like, the, relative to May 9th, we'll have an idea of, here's what we're expecting to have happen, more so like, it's honing right now, but we'll have a better, here's the scope of what we're trying to do, and then here, like, perhaps it's even, here are the number of volunteers that we think we need to execute this activity?
Yes.
Okay.
I keep forgetting that they have recorded this pickup, I didn't have it.
All right, moving on?
Can I say one more thing about the director's report? You notice beyond the player and rescue folks in the back, you have 15 young people who, well, not all young, they're all young, but these are prospective guards, lifeguards, and they've been here, you know, a week. There are five potential WSIs, and it's really been quite undertaking. The instructors from wall-to-wall have been doing a amazing job. There's so much enthusiasm and support in what's going on, very impressive. It doesn't solve all of our problems, because we still, you know, the group of WSIs can go and sort of teach lessons, doesn't mean that those five will be teaching lessons, so we're still shy of that, but it'll take time to... So, we're still shy of that, but it'll take time to build, you know? But it's a great start.
Right, I was just gonna say that. Yeah, I mean, it's, we're rebuilding, we're rebuilding a lot of things at the same time, too. So, there are lots of falls in the air, and it's night, I mean, you know, then it really becomes a capacity, you know, we must manage to our capacity, which demand will probably outweigh. We can only do what we can do. All right. So, moving on to the new business, we had added the pricing...
Fee schedule.
Yeah, fee schedule. I put structure, but schedule, you're correct. So, can we just talk process? Because we don't really have the inputs and the data for this.
Yes.
Okay, so, we could talk process and milestone dates to get us where we need to be. I think that's what we need, that's what we need.
Yes.
Okay. I just know it can be an involved discussion, and we don't have the data to have the discussion, so...
Exactly.
Okay. So, what, did you have something, did you have something in mind?
No, I just needed to make sure we started talking about it. But having discussed the subcommittees, maybe we should re-bring up the, what's the name of our, the program review? Except, we'll make it the fee schedule, subcommittee, program review or whatever, and work with the staff and come up with a proposal maybe by the next meeting. If not, then, it should be, it has to be April because, you know...
Yeah, I don't know that, I think we can just consider it an activity. I don't think, we don't need to form a whole subcommittee for that. I don't think we do. I think we can just say, you know, who wants to participate in that?
Okay.
You know, so, all right, so, hold on here.
I can probably make time for it. Those guys are coaching my kid now. Now I have a little more time in the summer, the guys that left.
Yeah, I wondered why you said you had time when you played baseball.
I coached him every year until he was twelve, and then I figured, you know, spread your wings, little birdie. It's no fun being a coach's kid. The coach is always harder on their kid, so...
Or easier.
See, and I was always harder, and I didn't wanna take the fun away from him, because it's about him. Once he graduates high school, I'll go back to coaching.
And Commissioner Holly, since you brought it up, I'm just gonna ask you, I know that you have the other, the handbook. Did you, was it your intention to participate or...?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so...
And the handbook is mostly done, other than I have to find those stinking, whatever those things are called. But, I don't know.
Just let me know what works for you, whatever.
I, before all the fee schedules are done, could we seriously look into all the senior, you know, Medicare stuff that, I know we used to take just like two, but...
Silver, you mean silver fit and silver...
Yes, those kind of things, yes. And they, I mean, they never took mine, but Anacortes takes like seven. And they, you know, and I, contrary to what Steve told me, over there, I paid, my program paid half, and so, I paid the other half, and it, you know, and I could do it for one day or...
I would say that's a subset, and I would rather focus on, this is what we're gonna charge, and then it's like the other that can be brought into later.
How much later?
The next May, June.
No, because the reason I'm...
I don't, I don't wanna get into it, sorry. And it needs to get into, but it's a different topic. It really is.
We probably get a half dozen quotes about it every single day, so I think it is very important that you get to start discussing this.
It is important, and it does need to be discussed. But let's start in, here's what the base is, and then we work into, and we're gonna have these programs.
Sure. Well, so, can I, can I ask a question a different way? If, okay, so, if this group focuses on that, because I think to look at what those pricing and programs are, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, we'd be looking at you to bring that to the table, right?
Yeah, and I think it's important to research those as part of the structure process because I know that one of the complaints that different board members had about silver sneakers before was that reimbursement rate was very low compared to what people are actually paying at the door. So, we would wanna make sure that we're aware of all of those things so that we don't end up in a problem three or four months from now where, hey, we're gonna accept this program, and now these people are getting a huge discount. So, I think just so that we're fully aware of all of those implications, that researching that as part of the process is probably really valuable.
Do you feel like, if, like, do you feel like that you have, you will have the bandwidth to bring that to the table? Because you're the person that has to bring it, right? I mean, that's, that's the truth. Because, and then, as, as the decisions are made, you're the person who has to help implement it. So, do you feel like you can do that?
My next week is very, very busy, but once I get past about the 11th, then things should smooth out for me.
And so, my question as the potential four of you, do you wanna try to set a date right now? Do you wanna do it offline?
Yeah, if we can set a date now, that would be great. So, sometime the week of the fifteenth. And you said three, after three, three o'clock is good for you, Shane?
Yeah, sure, yeah, that's fine. Four thirty is better, but sure.
Oh, then say four, you know, we could say five, but if, the problem is that Julie has to adjust her, her schedule to include that. Are you, do you know...
Would you do four? On the fifteenth?
I'm, which, the fifteenth, I said the week of the fifteenth, but Monday, the fifteenth is fine for me. Julie?
Lordy, 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 lordy.
What time?
Four o'clock.
And so, just keep in mind that...
Now, are we gonna be here? Can we meet here? Is the pool gonna be all torn up? Where do we, where do we need to meet?
What time is that?
Four o'clock. Oh, you can't be here, okay. How about Tuesday, the sixteenth?
I'm surprised I can't be here on the fifteenth.
Okay. So, four PM, fifteenth, and...
Yeah, location.
Yeah. Can we meet here, or do we have to find a different location? What do you think is going on here?
It would be better to not be here.
Okay. How about, you know that Whippy Coffee has that big kind of meeting with the table there? The one that's over by my knees? Let's make it Whippy Coffee, and I'll try and get there like half an hour early and kick everybody else out, or, you know, just go in there and start making disgusting noises.
I will not be entering that detail into the minutes.
It's already, it's recorded.
I know, I'm just saying that, but I will not be, I will leave that.
It's uncalled for.
And so, just, just to note, the next regular meeting is the 25th, so, just, the meeting, I know there's a lot, I know there's a lot going on, and it's just, if we expect to present something, you have to have your meeting objectives in mind, in line with that. Okay, thank you. So, we have a, we have a plan there. Staff reports, I think we already covered that, so, I mean, that's a bonus. We did, we got through that. Is there, but is there anything that either of you would like to add?
I think you covered most of it pretty well on the Director's Report.
Okay, excellent. Cool, thank you. Final board comments. Commissioner Hoffmeier? Commissioner Harden? Commissioner Holly? I also have no final board comments. Our, the next regular meeting will be Thursday, April 25th, 2019, 6:30 PM. Question, will that be located here? And if not, do we need to then announce a location? Do you wanna let us know? Okay.
I'm gonna be safer to go somewhere else.
Okay. Okay, so, you guys will try to figure out what works for that timeframe and advise us.
We've used the senior sign-on before, and I don't know, did they charge us?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it was like...
The school district, it's twenty bucks an hour.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we use the Elko, but they meet Thursday night, so we can't.
But let's, I mean, you guys will figure that out, right? Meaning, if they're the ones that are gonna have to make the arrangements anyway, then we can just let them figure it out.
Who knows that the Bay has a nice meeting room like that?
I don't know what they do. I don't know if they charge them.
Not a chair.
I'm with you, John.
Uh, hold on. Thank you. Commissioner Holly?
I will second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously, I was about to say anonymously. And so, we are adjourned at 8:34 PM. Thank you so much.